All right. That concludes work session 2.01. We'll now transition to 2.02, budget discussion. I'm going to turn this over to Kathleen to kick off and Dr. Noonan to follow.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Thank you, Tate. I just wanted to make sure we all were aware of that we sort of have a challenging timeline with the budget process, which is similar to years past, but it feels extra challenging this year in that this is our last public meeting before we approve our budget on May 13th. And just wanted to make sure that the community and the board was aware that this was our last opportunity to address our budget needs, especially in light of current conversations among the general government on potentially, you know, reduction in the forecast of revenue and potential reduction in the tax rate. And I wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to clearly communicate to the community and to counsel what the implications of those reductions would be, particularly because they don't set their budget until officially until May 12th, and we have a full 24 hours before we then are aware of our official transfer and adopt our budget. So I just wanted to make that clear, and I look forward to Dr. Noonan continuing the conversation.
I'll continue the conversation, but I might be a little less politically astute to what you have said. This is sort of a trying time for us as to what has been going on. And quite frankly, I think that one of the greatest concerns that I have about what's been happening is that, one, the timing, generally the timing, of being in the middle of the budget cycle for the city council's budget as opposed to your budget, which was passed months ago. But also, quite honestly, that the timing of the discussions that are actually happening with the council. Two meetings ago, which was the Monday of spring break, I'm aware that we had two of our teachers show up to speak who stayed until very late and didn't have an opportunity to speak because the conversation about the budget that was going to take place didn't happen until much later in the evening. And then last night, the topic of conversation was the budget, but the opportunity to talk about the schools didn't happen until after 10 o'clock at night. So there's really not a lot of opportunity for the community to engage in the conversation that's happening with the budget relative to the schools either. So I don't mean to presume that this is purposeful, but I am very worried about, one, the timing of all of this, and then actually the time that it's happening. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk about it tonight. I do want to just put a couple of things out there as markers. One is that we've had a really great revenue sharing arrangement with the city council now for seven years in a row, and it has worked to the extent that for the last six, for the prior six years up until last year, we knew going into the council's budget what the amount of money was going to be in the transfer, which made all of our calculus very straightforward and very simple. Last year, unfortunately, something very similar happened where some things happened at the 11th hour and our requested transfer was actually cut. So we had to make a budget reduction last year as well. And so this would be the second year in a row where there potentially was a budget reduction. I don't want to, I also want to contextualize this conversation. I think we all know kind of what's happening relative to the economy and it being a little bit unstable at the moment and not being clear about what's happening. So I certainly understand the need to revisit the budget, and I also understand the potential need to revise the revenue down by $1.2 million. But in the context of our revenue sharing agreement, that $1.2 million revised revenue down, downward, means a $600,000 cut to the schools going into our budget. I just would remind anyone who's listening that we started in December sharing with the council that we thought our needs were going to be closer to a 9% transfer, and we worked diligently on our side to really bring the number within guidance to 5.9%, which is what the council told us would be the guidance. Then what we found out was that, you know, revenue had gone up pretty significantly because housing prices have risen and the taxes for those houses would go up. And so the council began to kick around a 2.5% tax cut to the homeowners while maintaining the schools and the city, the general government, whole in their budgets because the revenue from the housing stock had been so significant. Now with this $1.2 million reduction in revenue, that would mean that we, there are some options, and some of those options that they're exploring are making cuts on both the school side and the general government side and still giving a two and a half cent reduction to homeowners while not fully funding the schools or fully funding the general government and/or doing something else. And I have an opinion about that, and I'll reserve my opinion, but rather than tell you that, I just want to make sure that you're aware if we do end up having to take a $600,000 reduction, where some of that might come from. And the way that I see it, there's really three places that we could go. And I'll just remind those folks that are listening, because this board knows it better than anyone, is that 86% of our budget goes into people, right? It's, we're a staff-oriented organization. We work with kids, and we can't hold positions vacant for six months to capture salary savings like other places can because we can't, we have kids that need a teacher. So when I think about the needs that we have and thinking about those three places that we can come to, to look for cuts, there are no good options out here. And part of the reason there are no good options is because at the same time that the council is considering cutting the budget or reducing the revenue or decreasing our transfer by $600,000, we're growing in enrollment over the course of three years by over 350 students. We see students every week enrolling in our schools, and that's not by accident. That is through some really good collaboration and some good processes that the general government and the city have put in place to build our, build our city out. But at the same time, when we put in places to live, we're going to get kids out of there. So this coming year, just to sort of use the analogy that I used previously again, is that we are expecting 154 new students this coming year. That's the same number of kids that we have currently in our kindergarten class. So it's essentially adding a whole nother class of kids into our school system. If you look at our kindergarten class, we have eight teachers, eight paras. Right there, that's 16 staff members that we need to take care of, those 154 new kids. In our budget, we're not asking for anything near that because we sharpened our pencils and we came to that 5.9% budget guidance. So as long as we're growing by this increased number, we have to be able to pay for the teachers and the staff to support us. So if we're cut, where are the places that we could go? And I'll just sort of high level, high level on first and then give you some detail. The first is class size. Right now, we enjoy a nice class size in our school division. It's something we count on, our parents count on, and really look at as what separates us from other school districts. The second is to cut people. Again, and by the way, if we raise class size, we're talking about cutting people. It's a reduction in force and could end up in a riff. The second is to cut people just more generally. In other words, or cut positions, not fill vacancies that we have that are currently available or identify positions that we could cut. And then the third is, the third option is that we could go back to the union and say to the union, "I'm sorry, we don't have the money to fund your step and cola, so instead of doing a full cola, we're going to cut $600,000 out of the cost of living adjustment." Again, none of those options are good. We have growing enrollment numbers, and our teachers are not compensated at the level that they need to be compensated at. There's no reason that our teachers shouldn't be the highest paid teachers in the state of Virginia. There just isn't. We're the best school division in the state of Virginia. Our teachers should be paid accordingly, and we're not even close to that. So let me start with class size, because I think it's important for you all to know kind of what that looks like if we do need to cut in class size. And I've done a little bit, and I wouldn't say it's back of the napkin. I think it's a little bit more firm than that. But if we raised class size by two, so in other words, right now, we staff kindergarten first and second grade at 22 to 1. Say we raised it to 24 to 1, and then third grade on, we went from 24 to 1, which we staff at, to 26 to 1. We would end up accounting for a riff or a cut of staff of approximately eight positions, four at the elementary, K5, and then four at the secondary. That would net us somewhere in the neighborhood of what we would need to get to, maybe a little bit further north than what we need to get to, to get to that $600,000 cut. But again, cutting, cutting teachers in a time of growth doesn't, one, doesn't make any sense to me, and, two, it is something that we really hang our hat on. It's something that's really important, is that relational component to Falls Church City. It's what sets us apart from other school divisions. So that's, that's one way we could get there. Another way is to not fill some of the vacancies that we have. And so, for example, we have four special education administrators in our four big buildings, right? Taking Jesse Thackeray out of it. Right now, we have one of those positions that's filled. We could create that position to become, for example, a secondary position, and then we could hire an elementary person and not fill two of those special ed administrative positions. We could also add to that, not filling the math elementary specialist position that we have that's currently vacant. We also have a security position that is vacant. And when we start pulling together some of these vacancies, we could probably get to the $600,000. But again, you know, when we think about where are the needs in the division, whether it's special education or safety and security, we were just talking about it tonight, those are positions that are really hard to even think about cutting, particularly when we're seeing growth in the needs of our kids. So the other, the other thing we could do in terms of cutting positions is we could identify some positions that currently exceed the standards of quality. Again, that's something that we really pride ourselves in, and we talked about it tonight. We exceed the SOQ in psychologists. We exceed the standards of quality in social workers. We exceed the standards of quality in school counselors. We exceed in special education. We exceed in ESOL teachers. So we could begin to cut some of those positions out of the budget, which ultimately could, would, and could and would end up in a reduction in force, and we couldn't do it through attrition because most of those positions are currently filled. But those, that's another place that we could go for positions. Ultimately, again, not a great option, particularly in a time of growth. We're going to see more than 350 kids over a three-year period, which represents almost 15% growth in that period of time. And then the last option that I mentioned was revisiting the compensation package for our employees. As I think you all are keenly aware, we, we inked a collective, a three-year collective bargaining agreement with our teachers and our support staff that guarantees them a step increase and a cost of living adjustment that's associated with the CPI each year. And we benchmarked that against what Social Security's CPI is, and this year was a two and a half percent increase that Social Security's going to get. So to get to that $600,000, we could revisit the cost of living adjustment and cut it from two and a half percent to a 2.25, or 1.25% cost of living adjustment, which is about half, and that's about $600,000, and still give a step. Again, not a great option for a number of reasons. One is, I don't, I don't think our teachers are compensated as well as they could be or should be. And, two, I don't, I'll just share with you, I don't think it's a good idea to not honor the contract that we just spent a lot of time engaging in. But if we have to come up with $600,000 somewhere, those are really the three places that I see that we can go to dig in to find those $300,000. Now, there are some things on your budget, in the budget currently, that you could not fund, that could, you know, begin to, you know, nibble around the edges. But to get to a $600,000 increase, we have to go deeper than just nibbling around the edges. So I don't, I don't know how far you wanted me to go, but, but I wanted to make sure that you all were keenly aware of, if we needed to cut that much money, that those are some places that we would really consider to get to that $600,000 mark.
Can I respond? Yeah, thank you. No, that was, that was perfect. Thank you so much. I think that's really a great reminder for us and especially informative for the community who I know is, is paying attention. And so my first follow-up is to confirm, so that 1.2 reduction in, in reduced revenue projection split 50/50 would be $600,000 for us, and that's with the, with the flat tax rate?
That is with a two and a half cent reduction in the tax rate. If they did a flat tax rate, let's say this, let's say, let's say the council wanted to give a tax reduction, they actually could give a half-cent tax reduction and not give a two and a half cent tax reduction, and the schools and the general government would be whole, and our budget would be funded. I said I wasn't going to say it out loud, but it's a win-win for us. The general government's funded, the schools are funded, and the taxpayers get a half-cent reduction on the tax rate, which if you look at it over the last five years, six years, we've dropped precipitously. And to think that the council would consider giving a two and a half cent reduction before funding the schools and funding the government seems a little bit unusual to me.
So that $600,000 is with the, with the full two and a half reduction that they've been voting?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, and I do feel, like, just, I just wanted to say again that the timing of this is just really challenging for us to not have, to have gone through our entire process and been as transparent and engaged the community as much as we can, and then for this to be our last opportunity. And while I fully understand the stress of the local economy and would never pretend that, you know, whether it's $500,000, or $500 or $1,000 that people might be paying in additional taxes, I would never say that that's not a significant amount of money. But at the same time, I, I just feel like the value of our schools is, to your point, the retention and the recruitment of teachers is things like class size and is going above our SOQ, the way we fund positions. And so, and that quality of our schools is why our home values are so high. And bring in the revenue for, that benefits everybody, even people who don't have kids in the schools or don't live in single-family homes. So I appreciate you laying it out there, and I did want to remind the community who might be watching that there is a town hall on Thursday at, at 7:00 at City Hall, a general government budget town hall, where anybody who is paying attention and concerned could certainly go and learn more, and there's an opportunity for public comment, both virtually and in person. I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Can you tell, this is the first I've ever heard of that. Has that been advertised?
It is, it is on the website. I know they, they discussed it last night at the work session, and it's on the city's website. So Thursday at 7:00 PM at City Hall.
Well, thanks for letting us know.
Yes, so anybody who wants to go and learn more or speak publicly, that is a good opportunity. I'll step away now and let my colleagues weigh in.
Lori Silverman.
Thank you. And Dr. Noonan, you were not going to get away with not talking about the real dollars because that's exactly what I was going to ask you. Is there a way to do this, even keeping the tax rate flat without cutting the schools by $600,000? And there actually is without raising taxes.
That's correct.
So...
Actually, you can give a tax cut.
You can still give a tax cut.
And keep us whole.
And keep us whole. Because the three options that you mentioned are all non-starters. First of all, you would need board approval to increase class sizes above 22 and 24.
Correct.
And I will be a no vote on that. I'm not going to vote to increase class sizes, so I think the schools would be kind of stuck. I don't think we need, we should be going back and renegotiating a contract that we just signed into. And if we want to start picking between security and math specialist and another classroom teacher because of the influx of students, I don't know where you go to find those savings. So I think that's impossible. So I hope that the board passes the five-point, and we already dropped, as you mentioned. Thank you for mentioning that. We already dropped from a 9% transfer to a 5.9 transfer, which is within guidance. And the city government has the ability to honor that guidance by doing that half, half...
Half a penny.
Half a penny tax cut. So they have the ability to do it. And if they choose not to, that's on them, and we're doing the best thing that we should be doing for the students and for the community. And I hope that anybody who's listening in will contact city council if they can't make the meeting that Ms. Tice had brought up, that I hope they email them, they call them, they do everything they can to advocate for the schools, because I think that it's extremely short-sighted for city government to be doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Other questions or probably comments? Bethany?
Yep. I echo my colleague that all of these feel like non-starters and not things that I think we should go back to. I'm going to ask you the question that any layperson is going to ask who doesn't understand how our budget works.
Sure.
We approved at some point not that long ago, maybe in January, to invest roughly half a million dollars in a concession stand, right? For one-time funding. Why can't we just take that money?
Yeah.
And this is hopefully a one-time problem, but, you know, optically, like, we have other buckets of money. Why can't we just take that if this happens and replace it?
That's a great question that someone who doesn't know how the budgets work would ask. And the, and the short answer of that is that the money that we allocated to those projects, the concession stand is a great example, is considered year-end one-time money. So that is money that we received from the city council, that we received from the city council as part of our revenue sharing for end-of-year balance. And so what that means is it's like a savings account, essentially it goes into. The positions that we're talking about cutting, that if we were to use one-time money, are recurring positions that happen every year. So let's say we just took that $500,000 and refilled five positions with it. That would be good for one year, but that next year, those positions would still be there, and we wouldn't have that $500,000 bucket to draw from again. So it's, it's like paying your water bill with your savings. Once your savings is gone, you can't pay your water bill, but your water bill keeps coming anyway. That's why you have to build your water bill into your everyday routine expenses.
Okay, so I'm going to just keep pushing on this because I can hear people in the community asking these questions, so...
For sure.
Let's have them. So, okay, so why wouldn't we do that, right? Isn't that what savings are for? Shouldn't we be using savings for this because we're in a crisis moment now?
Sure. Again, those savings do run out, and I think, I think a couple of things. One is, these positions in a growth period of time are not going to go, we're not going to see a reduction in student population over the next five, 10 years. So as long as we fund these positions with recurring dollars that are part of the budget, they are in the budget and we can continue to pay for them. However, if we do pay for these positions out of that one-time money, we would need to get that one-time money every year in the same amount to pay for those positions, and that one-time money is variable from year to year. One year, we might get $2 million in year-end money. This year, we got $800,000, and the council got $5 million because of the way that that sort of revenue share worked out, because it was interest from another account, but I digress. So, so it is, again, the best way for me to describe it is, or the best analogy I can say is you're, you know, you're paying these recurring costs with your savings account. The savings account's going to run out, but these costs are going to keep coming. And that's, that's what's complicated about using one-time money for recurring costs.
So I appreciate that clarification, and so just to make sure I'm understanding, if we had to, we could do it, but then we're essentially papering over the problem that we're going to have what's going to appear to be even a bigger hole the following year because that one-time money is gone, and now the hole, which was this, is this because we've got more kids coming.
That's 100% correct. The way I think about it is we're creating a structural deficit for ourselves by budgeting with one-time money for ongoing and recurring costs and creating what some might consider a cliff, right? So we're creating a cliff for ourselves that next year we got to fill, and oh, by the way, that cliff gets higher. Even if we don't grow by any positions, those five positions next year get a cost-of-living adjustment and a step and cost more. So each, each year, we create a structural problem for ourselves in the budget.
Thank you for explaining that.
Jared?
And now, related to the one-time money funding, some of the positions that we have this year were actually one-time money, and we were going to move them to recurring with some of the funds. And so now we're, again, kind of in a similar position as we were last year, kind of kicking the can down the road. And I would point out, so aside from that, I think it's important for the community to know kind of where students are coming from. And so just kind of taking a look at the student by dwelling data, I took a look at it, and it's 212 students from FY '22 to FY '25, that's the number of new students, 212. 71 of those are coming from Broad and Washington and Founders Row. And so when people say, "Where are the students coming from?", a quarter of the growth about, or a third of the growth, has come from the brand-new developments. And Broad and Washington, at that point, was not even fully rented out. And so, and we've had an increase in students coming, coming from those developments as well. So the council is, you know, I think rightly, you know, increase the, the growth of the city. I think it adds a lot to the city. But they also have to kind of recognize that they have to fund the growth in the schools as well if they're going to fund the growth of people. And so, so just for the community and the board, growth is coming from the new developments along with many other places.
Yeah, no, Jared, I appreciate you sort of digging into that and helping to just put a finer point on, on that. We know it's coming from various places, but this is a large place that it's coming from, and, and I think you're absolutely correct that we have to meet that need, and city council has to help us with meeting that need. I share your frustration, Dr. Noonan, Kathleen, others, about the timing. You know, I know that some of it's not always predictable. They had new data about, about revenue, et cetera, and some of that is just sort of real time. But, you know, we, as you said, have one more public meeting, and it's going to be after, after they have voted. And so we don't have the opportunity to get the kind of public input that we've made such an effort to get as we formed our budget and voted on that. And we really value having all of that input from our community members. So it's, it's frustrating, to say the least, that if we were to have to make such a large decision, it would have to be without sort of those reflections and that input as well. So I think, you know, I have a lot of thoughts, and it's, it's frustrating, to say the least, but I would also reiterate what my, my colleagues here said, that it seems like an impossible choice, the cuts that we would have to weigh, particularly in light of the growth that we're facing. And so I would really, yeah, strongly suggest that our school community go out to this town hall meeting, that they submit public comments to city council, that they show up to city council meetings and have their voices heard. Would, do they want, do they want our class sizes cut? Do they want our schools to have to bear this burden? And perhaps we can, is there a possibility that we could put in morning announcements, the town hall meeting?
I think we could do that.
I don't know if that's an appropriate place to have that. And I also just want to reiterate your point that there could still be this tax rate reduction of half a cent and make the schools whole and make, you know, the city whole. To me, that seems like the best option for all, and so I'd really hope that our school community can hear that and advocate for that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Amy?
So I don't have any more brilliance to add. I just wanted to say that I stand with my colleagues in support of the budget.
Thanks, Amy. Jared?
Yeah, I think, I think Dr. Noonan kind of pointed it out. When we talk about what we provide in the schools, part of that is, you know, the city council, I know several members of the city council want to make this a welcoming community. And what we do in the schools is provide a welcoming community by providing higher than the standards of quality that are mandated by the state. We provide higher number of ESOL teachers per ESOL student than anywhere in the region. We provide higher special ed administrators, special ed teachers, special ed, special ed paraprofessionals than anybody in the region. And with an increase in those students who are receiving special ed services, with an increase in the number of students who are coming from ESOL, with an increase in the number of students who are coming from economically disadvantaged backgrounds, I think now would be the best time to fund those types of things to make this the most welcoming community that we can.
Thank you, Jared. Kathleen?
Yes, just absolutely echo all of these comments. And I just wanted to reiterate, I know we've touched on it. But to be clear, I think while a, a percentage of this growth is coming from the new development, not all of it, but regardless of where they're coming from, they're here, we welcome them, we want them here, we're excited about the development, we're excited about the enrollment, so long as we can serve our kids to the same level that we are used to. And I, I just wanted to make sure we were clear. I feel like I've heard that, but wanted to say it explicitly.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for Dr. Noonan or just in general? Okay. All right. Thanks, Dr. Noonan, and appreciate everybody's advocacy on this and, and outreach. So hopefully we'll, we'll see what happens over the next couple of weeks. So, but I appreciate everybody's effort on this.